Everybody.
Oh, I understand.
I understand what I mean.
Can't find the cash, can't focus on it. Every time you get in. It's like, yeah.
Oh, I know.
It's worse than the 2003 one.
And I, I was asking.
That was the last one. We had a whole five, we had like one whole five, we had huge.
You read it?
Barry.
Yeah?
That was it. This was different.
No, I was gonna say too, I'm sure that you're probably.
Oh, a bunch of problems.
Oh.
They, 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 Barry, their houses, you don't have many big buildings.
I know.
Oh, God. They, they shut the heat.
Oh, geez.
On vacation, somebody turned off the heat.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Now, Joe, you understand, you know what a soft urine is.
Yeah.
Okay. Go through the woman code. Right? The code.
Mm-hmm.
It should be, I should let it boil, it should be cold. But, oh.
Hmm?
The doctor. And one way to do it, and sometimes there's more houses getting.
Yeah.
But, it should be cold. And if there's anything coming out, then this is not.
Right, right, right.
Water, that's the boil. Just foam insulation. If every house could be foam insulation, right?
My sister.
Done right away.
The idea of it is nice.
You, you would already like it.
I didn't really like.
Right, right.
It's an April, it's underground.
Well, you have to talk to her.
New house on Lincoln, sir.
We both are.
No day. Dr. Chris Ray.
Well.
Door, thirty-six hours, no power, this is how it's only one block.
So, what is it, are those around the extreme part of the building?
The thermal envelope is the way that buildings are.
No, they have to be below the foundation.
Everywhere. It should be all good. You know those crews that have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like three dollars. It's a fly out.
Before you lay that's, uh, it should be, it should be.
I do this man, sack, just on the roof. Everything should be steamed, like, with foam. None of it's greasy.
Yeah.
That's all.
You know, do they, is Benzo's wrong?
All wrong. The need is rough.
Yes, we've been through a barb, he's.
Okay, well, this is, oh, this is out before we post. I know, I'm continuing it, but I. So they, we posted something that's not.
She's British.
At least it's nowhere. I don't.
No flow.
So I gotta be on Mr. Motion. I'll be Mr. Second. Be Mr. Second, okay.
Yeah. Or Madam Second.
Yeah.
I'm taking Linda and Sylvia's place.
Yeah.
Uh, yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome to our meeting of the planning board this evening. Thanks for coming out on a rather frigid night when the temperatures are getting into the sub-zeros here, so we really do appreciate it. For my board, there's an agenda in front of you at this point, there's one thing I'd like to correct, which is Article forty-four, and I'm sorry if anyone has shown up for this. That is actually going to happen on three nine. It was erroneously posted as being tonight, so if anyone did show up for that, I have to apologize profusely for that happening, so. Above me on that, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. First public hearing we had before us was zero five dash fifteen, Nantucket Theater Institute, five Northwater Street. Andrew Leslie, that was taken, what's become of that?
The attorney representing the applicant asked effectively moved later in the agenda, we had another obligation.
Okay.
Ask that you extend that.
That's fair enough, so I'm not hearing my board members be adverse to that, and.
Continue.
Yeah, we're just gonna move along. So, Article forty-four, like I said, is continued to three nine, that brings us to Article fifty-seven. This is a zoning map change from R ten to CN for properties on Hooper Farm Road, Fairgrounds Road, and Sparks Avenue. Ms. Vorse.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, so I reviewed a letter sent by the proponent of this article that talked about placing the restrictions that we talked about, so I believe if the board is ready to vote, MSU should proceed.
Okay.
So we're ready for, for a favorable recommendation? Is that what we're going with, for the existing article, Andrew?
If, yes, if that's.
If the board, yeah. If the board's so inclined.
I will, I will just, you know, refresh your memory that this recommendation was a part of the Mid Island Plan to extend commercial.
Last year, though, we fixed it.
It was supported.
Yeah.
A larger article was supported by the board at a, at a prior town meeting.
Okay. Public hearing, all right.
Yes, it is, so is there anything from the board, first of all, before we continue?
I'm good.
No, is there anyone in the general public who'd like to comment on this? Seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Motion's made in second for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, pleasure of the board.
A motion to give this article a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's now made in second for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Next before us is Article sixty, this is a zoning map change from RCVR LUG one and LUG two to LUG three for properties within the county, country overlay district and identified as town-owned land or protected open space. Ms. Vorse.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I did find that there's a few minor corrections that need to be made to this article. At this point, I think those can be corrected in your final motion, so I don't have any further issues with this. So if you're comfortable with proceeding on this, if you could include in your motion, subject to any minor edits to the, to the parcels that are contained.
We don't need to continue this, though. We can close this.
You can close it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, is there anything else you wanna? No? Okay. Any one in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
I will make a motion to give this article a favorable recommendation with changes from staff as amended.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Made in second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Article sixty-one, this is a zoning bylaw amendment to change the use accessory apartment to accessory dwelling and to amend the standards contained within the definition. Andrew, Leslie.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. We had reviewed some suggestions from our zoning compliance officer who was here earlier today, we then followed up with town council, so we believe this is an order for you to vote if you're inclined to support this idea.
Okay.
Leslie?
Go ahead.
We did have just a few minor language changes.
Please.
Don't affect the intent of the article.
Okay.
Make sure you know you're not voting on it.
So we, we're gonna have it cleaned up and ready.
It, I think Leslie's saying she's cleaned it up, is what I heard you say, yes.
Okay, good.
Anything else from board members? Do you have anything?
Fantastic.
No? Okay. Any one in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and pleasure of the board.
Motion to give a positive recommendation for Article sixty-one.
Okay.
I'll second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. That brings us to Article sixty-three, which is the tiny house district, which is a zoning bylaw amendment. Ms. Vorse.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I think we have reviewed this matter, and at this point, I think our recommendation is not to proceed with it at this time. We do think that the tertiary dwelling article, which I think does deserve your support, would allow this in a permanent setting, so basically, you know, and permanent could be on blocks, on peers, but with a permanent connection to utilities and everything else. I think we, we would continue to study this as a potential concept to implement in the future, but I think the, the trailer issue has raised some concerns to amend our existing bylaw. The utility connections and some other things have raised some concerns about campers and other things that really, I think, require some more thought.
Okay.
You know, I mean, safe to say that our two articles, the, the third dwelling and the accessory apartment kinda covers the concept that this is over intended, essentially.
Yeah, I think with the exception of the movability, the trailering of the unit to different locations, which I suppose some of them probably could go on a Bobcat anyway, if they need to.
We have to do something that can be accepted, you know, so.
So I, you know, I, I think his creativity, a lot, the article.
Yeah.
You know, helped us with our thoughts on the other article, so I, you know, I don't think it was an effort in vain.
No, I don't either.
I think we can still continue to look at it, but right now, I think it's not entirely ready.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, how do we proceed? The, the language on the warrant is.
Hold, hold, may?
Okay.
So, just, just a few things. Is there anything else from the board, first of all? All right, so go back to where you're gonna head to. My, my suggestion is really twofold. One is to give this a favorable recommendation, but I, in that way, but you can vote in the negative for it, against it. I mean, it kinda shows that we're, we're thinking about it, at least, but what I'd like to do is have staff draft out a, a small notation afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
We don't want it to just say negative, not, not take action, we have to come up with something, because this is like, kinda like the incubator idea that we were already working on, is what I'm saying.
Right. So does that kinda make sense to you guys, where, where we tend with this? Yeah, and I think staff will, you know, staff will share that, that comment with us. Yes, sir.
What exactly were you comparing the two? Again, I'm sorry, I lost you a little bit there.
Not on tonight's agenda, but that, but they're.
The tertiary dwellings?
Tertiary dwelling.
Yeah, as, as Nat said, this was kind of, this article became the genesis of that other article being spurred forth, so the tertiary dwellings really is taking this basic concept and expanding out on it to, to what would be com-compliant with zoning.
Mindset. You know, it's gotta pass down to you.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Good. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this? All right, seeing no one, then, if you're so inclined.
Chasing the clings to it here tonight.
That's okay, if you're so inclined, I'd recommend that we close the public hearing.
Yeah, make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded for discussion, hearing none, all those in favorable, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to give this article a negative recommendation with staff's drafting, is that the right thing?
Okay, so I.
Jabs like, like the problem, how do we say it?
All right, so let me, let me kinda just go back through what I said a few minutes ago, I, I think that you do wanna show, not necessarily a, a negative aspect to it. So I'd recommend that you do, you make your motion as favorable.
Okay.
And then the board should vote against that favorable recommendation. In that same motion, I'll also ask that you please make sure that staff draws a comment to this as well, too, because.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay. So.
So moved.
Favorable, but not at this time.
Yes, so Mr. Marklenger moves what we just said.
Future consideration.
I don't know, I didn't, I thought, I meant for net say that, that's fine.
Oh, all right, so is that.
Favorable recommendation, but for, but to be tabled for future.
With a comment expressing.
Expressing the merits of it.
Positive aspects of it.
The merits, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, I'll second that.
This is kind of a, you know.
I know, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a little reverse logic, but.
It's not negative, but it's not this article.
Right, right. I mean, and, and, like I said, just for comment, an unfavorable recommendation really does send it a whole different tone to it.
Yeah, that's, no, you're right, I didn't think of it.
Yeah, so just, just be mindful of this when you do your vote, is what I'm going to say to you.
Okay.
All right, so if you're all clear in the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. You're in.
What? Oh, I thought we said, oh, we're supposed to say.
I'm not suggesting what you should say.
Maybe, could I?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman, could I, I think maybe we could take a vote of no, uh, no action.
Yeah, that's, there's another thought.
And then with a comment, so then you can vote something in the positive.
And, and there, I actually like that answer, that's, that's.
I mean, I see your, your intent, but, um.
I, I, I hear you, that's even.
Take no action with a comment is better.
Take no action as opposed to being opposed.
And it's also more standard.
It, you know what, it's a lot more neutral.
Yeah, as opposed to not to adopt.
Yes.
Not to adopt is more.
No, I, I, is that kinda?
There's no playing with this.
That's, that's, that's appropriate.
All right, so let's.
So I'll make a motion that we take no action on this article with a staff comment for the warrant.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay?
Great.
Yep.
All right, sorry for any confusion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, thank you.
Wow. Still hot in here.
Okay, Article sixty-four. This is a zoning bylaw amendment to make technical changes to following sections in one thirty-nine dash two, and if you'll be so kind, allow me to wave the rest of the reading of this. So, go ahead, yes.
Ms. Chairman, we had a few questions that we wanted to go over with town council. Leslie, were there any substantive changes here? There were some issues raised, again, we wanted to check in with, with him, so I guess we're ready for you all to consider voting on this, unless you had any further concerns about the language we're using.
This is that, this is the house cleaning article, fixing some language stuff, right?
Right.
Mostly, okay.
Right, the substantive, um, what is our substantive?
Okay, so the, I think the substantive changes are, in the definition of adult uses, we're changing the minimum lot area from forty to twenty thousand square feet, because we have to have realistic sites for people to locate those types of uses.
Mm-hmm.
Then.
Is this a misprint?
After that, all housekeeping until we get to numbers eight and nine.
Yeah?
And eight and nine came out of a recommendation from town council, that extensions of pre-existing non-conforming ground cover should be granted through a special permit, not a variance.
Yeah, that's, that's right, yeah.
But that came from our council.
Okay.
And that's it, it's only substantive changes.
Yeah, Carl?
I'm sorry.
Did you, was there debate last year about the breezeways, is that cleaned up too, finally?
It is.
The ground cover issue? Isn't it?
Well, there was debate last year about the underground issue, and I think that's in here again.
That is in here again.
Yeah.
I believe that's cleared up.
And then there was some recent discussion about breezeway, which is in here as well.
Okay. Thanks. And Jeff?
I just have one little question. The, on the adult uses.
Yep.
Did any, did we look and see if there is any land available when you use these radiuses, or are they?
Um.
I mean, 'cause you do have to have a lot someplace, right?
Yes, the, the two zones that it's allowed in right now are the industrial zone and the RC two zone. So, in the industrial zone, there are, you know, there are these distances available.
Okay.
RC two is shrinking and shrinking, so.
Probably not.
Not so much.
Yeah.
We know that there's not forty thousand square foot lots available in all those districts, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Okay, anything else from the board? Any one in the audience wishing to comment on this? Not seeing any hands raised.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to give positive recommendations with the changes Leslie mentioned.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's now being seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Next thing is Article sixty-seven, which is a zoning bylaw amendment to make numerous modifications to section one thirty-nine dash twenty-three, site plan review.
Yep.
Leslie, is this for Ballywick?
It isn't. I would classify this entire article as housekeeping.
Okay.
Basically, it's the major and minor site plan review.
Mm-hmm.
It is a very long section of the bylaw, somewhat convoluted, and we're trying to amplify it, make it more user-friendly, which is a pattern of, of other articles that we've had some of, we're trying to clean up the bylaw a little bit after years of complications.
Awesome. Board members, did you have anything on this?
Yeah, we, we talked about this at the last.
Oh, yeah, this, this looks good.
Excellent. Any one in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no hands. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second that.
Motion is made in seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to give a positive recommendation of sixty-seven.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Next thing before us is Article sixty-nine, height limitations.
I love it.
Leslie, I think this is you again.
Well, this is a citizen petition.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I, I apologize, you're right. You're right.
Don't believe anyone's here.
I know, I was very, couldn't believe it.
Sixty-nine, I think you, your one member, Ms. Williams, may have had some strong feelings about this.
True.
I don't know if you wanna continue that, well, to the ninth, so she'll be present.
I thought we should have anyway, but I don't.
I'm fine with continuing, 'cause I, I do, I do think this needs to get looked at a little bit more.
You definitely can't give a vote on this tonight.
Right.
No.
Okay.
Especially without any representation.
Yeah.
Although there's one. I know you're not doing it, but.
Mr. Cohen, walk and just come on into the room.
I'm sure he knows all about it.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna call right on you. I'm, I'm only, he's only teasing.
I mean, the public hearing's open on, on sixty-nine, the height thing, so we're, we're kinda gonna continue it, but if you have any comments.
All right, but hold on for a minute, before we get there, I wanna clear my board and staff first, so Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna add for the record that I did have a discussion about the ZBA chairman, had a discussion with the ZBA chairman about this article.
And the other thing, too.
You know what you're in.
And he was supportive of this concept, and these are permits that go to the ZBA mostly, and they see lots of requests for variances, and he thought this seemed generally like a logical article to put forward that would, you know, reduce some of the burden on applicants that have to meet with federal guidelines.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, Leslie, while we're on this, okay, and it's fresh, there are two houses right now, right across from, like, what Vaughn Summers was, I forgot the name of the owner now, but they're right there. I mean, what would happen if this was passed and those houses were being built, what would be the difference?
If they were new houses?
Yeah, well, they already are, but new with this pass, like, would they be higher?
So, right now, right now, the maximum height limitation is, to simplify, is thirty feet.
From the ground.
And the average mean grade.
Yeah.
So, this would allow you to go up to twenty-eight feet above.
The first floor.
The first floor, so right now, at a lot of places in town, you have to start from minimum elevation ten. So it, so it could give you.
It's like you're subtracting two but adding something, like four or something.
So if you could, you know, I guess in theory, go, you know, ten feet over twenty-eight. But I, I think that the point here is, we have, you know, FEMA regulations that people have to meet to get their homes insured, to pass the building code, and.
No, the usable space, I get all that, I, I understand it, I, I'm, I think this is great, 'cause this is the kinda stuff that's gonna come out after all the FEMA stuff is in, but we, you know, when you, at the beginning of this, it's gonna look like a big change, but then eventually, they'll all be like this someday. I mean, that's what's gonna happen over time, it's just gonna take years and years for that to happen.
And right now, people are building anyway, but they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and they have to get a variance, and complete their case before they go.
So they wanna make, you wanna make it easy to just get the permit, without having to go through all this.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Carl.
I was just gonna comment through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Lowell, there's a couple on Holbert Avenue that are.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
You were talking about those?
Yes.
Yeah, that's pretty interesting.
They're right next to each other.
Yeah.
And you drive by.
Yeah, you're a little shocked at first.
You know, I know, it's not landscaped, and I, what they're doing is they're bringing the grade, kinda to make the, hide the foundation a little bit, but it's, I think that, you know, how do I say this? Downtown, the buildings are always taller. Holbert Avenue is gonna look different. I think that's what Linda's gonna talk about, that kinda thing, but I, I, I think this is great, I think this is what we should be doing, but I think that at the beginning of it, it's gonna take a while, 'cause people are gonna jack up the houses that they already have and just add, and they're gonna raise them to fix them, not necessarily a new house, but they're gonna raise them and fix them, that's over time.
And some of those will still require relief from the ZBA.
Yeah.
And some of them may require variance relief, some of them may require a special permit for an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
But, you know, some things can fall into this category of by-rate permitting.
That's good, I mean, we need, it's gonna be so hard for people to do this, we need to make it easier, this, this is what we're gonna be doing, you know, so. So you wanna keep this open for next, you wanna continue to deny from this, right?
I think that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I wanted to make one comment.
Yeah, please, go, go, go.
The thing that I think that ought to be part of this is what the elevation of the first floor is going to be, meaning that now you might have to set it up, if it's the floodplain's elevation eight, the first floor would have to be a little above eight. There's nothing in here to prevent one from going to ten, elevation ten, and then getting there twenty-eight feet on top of that.
Oh, I know what Joe's saying.
You know, I mean, in other words.
Joe said, don't use the article to make your house bigger, that doesn't have to be.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, while you're moving it.
Yeah.
Let's grab a view, I mean, that's, that's what, that's, that's same thing.
Especially when they're on the other side of Holbert Ave.
So that's, that's the only thing.
It's like having somebody in front of you at a concert.
And, 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 you know, when I do something like this, I, I do wanna set it like a half a foot higher or something, because stuff happens during construction.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So I think that part of it's gotta be looked at a little bit.
Should there be a not exceed, like, a height, you know, that, you know, or relieved by special permit or something, I don't know.
I, I don't know, 'cause it, say that, you know, a lot of, like, the Holbert Avenue used to always, was about around elevation five, all, they filled it all in.
Yeah.
So, but now, so you gotta go at least to eight now, and then there was another foot and a half change 'cause of the FEMA stuff.
Right.
So you're going up four and a half feet plus twenty-eight from what it was.
Well.
And you could, maybe try to grab another foot, it's starting to get to be.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's something.
Not, not, not this simple, this would be nice, but I just.
I, no, I.
Too simple, maybe, you know?
Just to. Well, I, I, I think the board is inclined to wanna wait till the ninth, and maybe this is just something that can be worked on a little bit.
Right.
More betwixt now and then, that you brought that thought up.
I've got a question.
Yeah, yeah, Carl?
Go ahead.
I just wondered through you, Mr. Chairman, to staff, is it possible to insert thirty-eight feet as a maximum on this, or is it gonna get too complicated between now and the ninth of March?
No, it's something that we could, we could include as part of our comments, so that might be a, you know, and then they would have to get a variance over thirty-eight feet, which, again, would have to show some hardship and unique conditions or something.
I think what, I think what the, the draft, you know, office trying to say, though, is to come up with a new way to measure.
Right.
Instead of this, like, mean grade thing, which is kind of.
No, I agree with this.
Lucy-goosie. He wants it to be from the first floor.
But that's fine, but who gets to set the first floor? That's the issue.
Yeah, right.
You know, that's the main, that's the main part.
Yep.
And because, once in a while, you go to conservation, and they, they want you to raise it for, to let sand pass through or something, I don't know. But, so you get caught in a, you know?
Well, I guess.
Squeeze there a little bit.
I guess that's what I mean in a sense, as, if you capped it at thirty-eight feet, you could have your first floor any higher you wanted, but you couldn't go higher with the ridge line than thirty-eight feet.
No, but you can't have the first floor where you want, because the FEMA is telling you where to put it.
No, but you could set it, the FEMA has a minimum, right? But as, as Joe's saying, it doesn't really say, it just says, you're in this FEMA area, and then you put the first floor somewhere, and then you can't, then you can go twenty-eight feet above it, but if you choose, you know, you're trying to maximize a view or something, and you say, okay, I'm going to put it at ten.
Yeah.
You're, you're above the flood level.
Okay, so in other words, you can't, FEMA can't tell you how high to go, they can just tell you, you can't go this low.
Correct.
I got it.
Yeah.
I got it. All right.
So, okay, we can look at that, and we'll come up with some options, maybe.
Good.
Okay.
That'd be healthy.
So, a motion to continue?
No.
Oh.
No.
Sorry.
Public hearing's open on this.
No, it wasn't going to be closed, but I.
That's okay. Public hearing's open on this, but I just want to see if anyone wants to, yeah, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I actually do have a brief public comment on this.
Sorry, I'm the one that asked you to speak.
I, I support the article. I think it makes excellent sense, and, you know, frankly, as, as much as lawyers like doing permitting, making it easier for the general public is much better. I feel terrible having, you know, someone, they're going to spend two or three thousand dollars because, you know, to get a variance, it really should be something that, it's such a common problem, we should be eliminating the problem, and I think that this is, this is going to hit so many people so hard, the board should be, try to make it so that you don't need a special permit, as long as you're within some reasonable level.
Because every house is going to be a special.
Yeah. Right, that's right. Right, so, you know, that's lucrative, but burdensome.
Yeah.
And, and we should be trying to avoid every house in an area having to come in for this kind of thing, although, you know, you can have a cap that, you know, maybe if ten percent of the people are coming in for a special permit, you've hit it right, but if eighty percent are, then, you know, it's, it's too much of a burden. I, I think most of you probably already know this, but I'll just say for the record that the thirty-foot rule actually just comes from based on how high the ladder was when they had the fire truck in nineteen seventy-two.
We knew that.
Yeah, so, you know, it is, it is the fakest zoning rule ever, because it's not applicable. And, you know, I think that Nantucket is lucky that we, because we have the HDC, giving someone extra rights by zoning doesn't mean that they could always exercise them if they are trying to create some ridiculous scenario where they've got a first floor jacked way up, it's not going to get through the HDC. You know, you could have, if you have a house on, on, like, Union Street, and your first floor is six feet off the ground, every other house is, it makes sense, but you can't just do that, you know, other places, it makes no sense.
Yeah.
So, there is, there's a secondary sense of reasonableness here to what makes sense in what area in terms of where you're going to set that, that first floor height, and I don't think you'd be able to get away with just jacking everything up unless it made sense for the area. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one?
I'm making a motion to continue to March ninth.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Article number seventy, this is a zoning bylaw amendment and zoning map change. The amendment is to insert a new overlay district entitled Nantucket Cottage Hospital Overlay District, and if the board is so inclined, I'd like to waive their.
Yeah.
Reading of the rest of this, so.
We're going to.
Mr. Vors.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you continue this matter to the ninth, to March ninth. I can let you know that there was a meeting, the Coast Guard had expressed some concern about the inclusion of the Vesper Lane properties. There was, I believe, a productive meeting that was held today with hospital representatives and the Coast Guard, so I think between now and then, we'll have more input on that. So, one other point is this article does currently include the Prospect Street land in the overlay district.
Yes.
And that's something we're likely to recommend be removed from this article.
Okay.
Because that Prospect Street article is entirely contained in Article ninety.
Got it.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Board members, any questions or anything? Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing's open, if anyone would like to comment on this. All right, seeing no hands.
Make a motion to continue to March ninth.
I'll second that.
Made in seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. So, for zoning articles, last thing is Article ninety, this is a zoning map change from R-40 to CN for property located at forty-seven Prospect Street. Mr. Vors.
I'd ask that you, the board continue this as well, so you can have a discussion about the hospital at the same time.
Yeah. Board members, any questions or discussion on that?
Make that motion.
Well, hold on. Let me just, since we're kind of, we're still running on that tack, is anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? All right, so your motions.
Make that motion to continue to March ninth.
I'll second.
Article ninety.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Okay. That brings us to A and Rs. We only have one before us tonight, which is seven eight oh two, Mary Valenteson, Patricia Wazan, trustee of the Patricia L. Wazan Trust Agreement of two thousand fourteen, eighth South Beach Street, and one McKay Way. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review that. Do you have any questions, concerns, comments?
That, that's a forty-one eighty-one L.
It's two buildings before.
Nineteen fifty-five, yeah.
Yep. So, go ahead.
So, we're all good with this one?
I'm fine with it.
Yes, both of them are visible in the nineteen thirty-eight area, so we recommend.
Okay. See that? Okay. Interesting.
All right, so I would accept a motion to.
I will make a motion to approve, endorse seven eight oh two, Mary Valenteson, Patricia Wazan.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. You have two second dwelling reports before you at this point. First one is Matthew Aguirre, and the second one is Jamie Grease. Does the board have any concerns, questions, comments? If not.
We.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am?
On the twelve Surfside Road.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a minor driveway issue that I think is easily resolvable. The site plan in your packet shows a very wide driveway cut at the end of the way going into the shared driveway access. Technically, that would require a special permit, so the board can't grant that tonight.
Okay.
So, if the site plan's slightly modified to reduce the width of that, the layout as shown is fine.
Okay, so we can, so that change can be made after approval?
Yes.
We approve it? Okay.
It would just be part of your approval.
Yep.
Review by.
Reviewed by staff. Yeah, do you need to take a second?
Oh, this is. Isn't this the one where you said?
That's what I, you know, that was the new site plan.
Right.
No, this looks similar to what you did, but I think you're still right about, you still need, you still need this.
It's the same issue.
Yeah, you're right. Yep, that's cool. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that looks, I got it. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's like fun. Good. All right, fantastic. All right, board members, so.
Are we doing them in a group, or are we doing them in a tab?
Doesn't make.
Because I have a question about the next one.
No.
All right, so, all right, let's, let's do, let's do them one at a time. So, on Matthew Aguirre on twelve Surfside Road, pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve twelve Surfside, second dwelling, with changes made by the last, like, with the.
I'll second that.
Motion's made in seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Jamie Grease, and this is for Crestwood Circle, Mr. Martin, did you?
Yeah, well, they have two curb cuts. And do we, do they have to have had permission for that?
Thank you.
Tom Nevers off Longwood.
Oh, I know where it is now.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's two.
There's a horseshoe driveway. Do you want the plant?
No, I'm looking at either one. It pre-existed the bylaw, which was in nineteen ninety-eight. Or, two, the planning board can approve that as part of the secondary dwelling approval.
We can approve that?
You can. You can approve it without a special permit when it's part of the secondary dwelling.
That's what I thought. It's not considered a second driveway that is in order to go to a new house, right?
What, only, otherwise it does need a special permit? So, if, somebody could independently request one, but it can be granted as part of your review for second dwellings.
I mean, this is what the horseshoe kind of thing, different in a different way.
Leslie, is it possible?
I want to check the area.
To pull up the area?
I don't have the staff report in my.
I took a look at it. I mean, I don't think it's bad or anything, but I thought we should try to clean it up.
A lot of those.
Does it, does it have the apron, or is that a condition?
Well, this place is paved, the road.
Yeah, the road's paved.
Right, I'm just wondering if the driveway ends, is that part of the cleanup is, does it?
Uh, it was snowy, I didn't, you know.
Okay. I think the. So, Catherine, we don't have a condition about the apron, does it have an apron?
That's how the horseshoe.
Right.
Consistent. And there is a driveway that goes long, further to the other end of the lot, which shows two parking spaces.
This might have been done before we got the apron, like, you know, in all of these conditions.
Sure, sure.
Right, it says there's a dirt and shell, and I'm just wondering.
Well, that's the nineteen ninety-eight area.
Okay.
So, it's pre-existing.
Well, no, no, when in nineteen ninety-eight, right?
Well, we have used the nineteen ninety-eight areas to determine if driveways are pre-existing.
Okay.
Because the bylaw was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight.
April.
The, the house is already there and built, so it's unlikely, but it was done back quickly.
And the photography was probably done before it was, you know, I mean, photography was done probably earlier than nineteen ninety-eight, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, and just one comment on this, as far as an apron requirement or not, the back lot that is before you, this is a covenant situation, so the front portion of the lot is subject to the Housing Needs Covenant Program, it's already been conveyed out.
Yep.
And the back portion is being developed by this person, their own home, so there's an ownership issue with this that we normally don't see.
I'm fine with approving it, I mean.
And.
So, what do we do about the apron? I'll do the. Jay, approach me.
I think we should waive it in this case, because it's a covenant house, and it already existed, it's not a new driveway, I mean, that's a different, the board usually takes but, and this is on an area that doesn't get much.
I understand, no, I agree with you, I'm just, it's winter, no one's really interested to see if they have one, you know?
I did, I did drive out to, to.
It doesn't say anything.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so, do you want to proceed ahead then?
Yes.
All right, and Leslie, just, if you could make some clarification, that covenant housing, because I haven't seen the report, but it is covenant housing, so just to kind of document how we got here.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think that would be a bad idea. So, with that, just that tiny little change to things, take out a motion to.
Secondary dwelling?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. And that brings us right back to where we first started at this point, which was zero five fifteen Nantucket Theater Institute on five North Water Street. So, Mr. Cohen, good evening, again.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully this will be very quick. I believe that you're familiar with this property and the uses on it, so I'll just skip to the point, which is that you currently approved a special permit, or a condition in your, a waiver in the existing MCD to go up to thirty-four feet, which was based on a calculation of, I think, thirty-three seven or thirty-three ten or something, we built in a few extra inches, and what we didn't account for was that that calculation was based on the elevation from the foundation and not based on the ground, and the ground, when you go out and do the zoning, because of the vari, because, because of the variation on the lot, it shoots, it shoots up to like thirty-four and a half, so what we'd like to do is go to thirty-five, so we're asking for an additional foot from thirty-four feet to thirty-five feet on the existing waiver. And then, there's actually a second issue that's not before you tonight, I'm just going to give you a preview in case there's any issues.
Sure.
Which is that I filed a separate application for a different modification, and based on the filing, it's going to be heard next month, but that is to waive the inclusionary housing, which is actually already waived, but the application that we filed, when we, when you waived it, we said that there was going to be a two-bedroom apartment in the antique house that's there now, and we've determined that based on code issues and the expense of bringing that into code compliance, that that's not likely to be feasible. And because the, the board regularly grants the inclusionary housing, basically without the provision of housing, and I actually think that you've, you've recommended discontinuance of the inclusionary housing as a, as a, in the bylaw anyway, that I'd ask for, I'm going to be asking for a modification to remove the two-bedroom requirements, so I'm only raising it now, because if it's an issue, I don't want to wait a, a month to find out that it's an issue.
I understand, so, thanks for the, look into the crystal ball, so to speak, on that one. one.
Thanks.
All right, so
Make a motion to
Well, hold on. Hold on. Board members, is there anything you need, or from staff? This is a public hearing as well.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, so the height increase is really in the peak of the roof, right?
Yeah.
This, this is a gable roof on top of the theater?
Correct.
So, the additional height is really what we're talking about, is
The ridge.
Up, up near the top.
Ridge.
Yeah, okay.